...this Thursday, July 17th, 2025. Invite you to remain standing through the Pledge of Allegiance, the first or invocation by Commissioner Larry Crawford.
Please bow with me for prayer. Holy God, it is with grateful hearts we come before you this evening to give you thanks for the abundant life that you have given us as you promised. Thank you for the good help that we're here tonight. God, as we do address the issues of our county, may we do it with loving kindness and for the betterment of our community. Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Crawford. It's a pleasure to recognize Commissioner Stidham at his desk. Something we've been doing for the last few months, and if this is something that you would like to bring to me, if you have a veteran or a minister in your community that you would like to include in our commission meetings, get with me on that. And I'd like to recognize Commissioner Stidham for introduction of our veteran of the day.
Tonight, we have with us Senior Master Sergeant Angelo Palatieri, U.S. Air Force retired. If everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, for being with us. Has every member recorded their presence? Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one present and three absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a forum. Sullivan County Commission regular session will come to order. Our first order of business is a proclamation recognizing Eliza Sanders, Miss Sullivan County, 2026. I'd like to invite the Honorable Mayor of Sullivan County, Richard Venable, Miss Sanders, to the well, please.
Thank you, Miss Sanders. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A pleasure to be with you here tonight, particularly with Miss Sanders. I'll read the proclamation. On behalf of the Sullivan County Commission, I, Mayor Richard Venable, do hereby extend sincere congratulations, in commendation to Eliza Faith Sanders, upon the occasion of her crowning as Miss Sullivan County 2026. Let it formally be recorded that on this day, 17th day of July, 2025, the Sullivan County Commission recognizes and honors Eliza Faith Sanders for her exemplary achievement in the field of education and the arts, and most notably for her steadfast dedication to community service. Be it further resolved, the Commission expresses full confidence and best wishes to Miss Sanders as she embarks on her duties as Miss Sullivan County 2026. We offer our continued encouragement and gratitude as she represents our county with distinction and grace, including her participation in the Miss Tennessee Pageant, a preliminary to the Miss America Scholarship Pageant. Miss Sanders, congratulations, and it's a pleasure to have you with us tonight.
Well, good evening. My name is Eliza Faith Sanders, and I am so happy to be with you all today. I am honored to stand before you tonight as the newly crowned Miss Sullivan County 2026, and I would like to begin by sincerely thanking Commissioner John Gardner for allowing me to be here today and for judging our competition. He did a wonderful job on our panel. This title is incredibly special to me, not only because of what it represents, but because it truly does bring my journey full circle. I proudly held the same title four years ago, and during that year, I was able to serve the community that I call home. During my previous year of service, I was able to visit every single school in the Sullivan County school system, reading to elementary school students, speaking with their middle schoolers about leadership and community service, and conducting donation drives to benefit children who are entering into the foster care system through the ISA once again. I also was able to promote my personal community service initiative, Families Are Forever, which is advocating for adoption and foster care. Outside of the classroom, I volunteered at numerous events sponsored by the Sheriff's Department, the school system, and many other organizations that help make Sullivan County so special. I learned firsthand how strong this community is when they work together. As Miss Sullivan County 2026, I hope to do many of those things again, but I don't plan on simply repeating my year that I had in the past. I instead want to build on that foundation, pick up exactly where I left off, and serve in even more meaningful ways this year. And that is why I am here with you all tonight, not just to reintroduce myself, but to ask for your partnership again. If there are county events, school initiatives, community fundraisers, I would love to help. I want to be involved, whether it is supporting foster families, encouraging our youth, or simply lending a hand where needed. I am here, and I am ready to serve. Thank you again for your time and for continuously pouring into me, not only as a product of the Sullivan County school system, but well into my adulthood as well. It is a privilege to represent Sullivan County once more, the place that I call home, and I look forward to serving alongside you this year.
Our next order, Networks Director Clay Walker, okay, Networks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Gardner. As I notice on the agenda, I'm between Miss Sullivan County and Alicia Phelps, and I'm not sure that's the draw I wanted. Very definition of a term between two roses. I'll do what I can do. The first order of business, I'd like to welcome our new board members from this commission. Commissioner Zane Vanover, Commissioner Joyce Crossway, they've been involved in our board meetings in the past and now as voting members. They've let their presence be known, and they're going to be very active and very great board members, look forward to working with them in that capacity. I mean, you received your newsletter last week. You would have received, and you bothered to read the letter from the CO. You will notice I talked a lot about elected officials in the recent trip I made to DC to visit with Senator Phil Hagerty, who is helping us with a big project that we've been working for about two and a half years now. Commissioner Stidham was among the delegation that was on that trip. I didn't know I was going to be part of the delegation. I just asked Nick Castle if I could go thank the senator and discuss the project with him, and thank him for all his work and chatting in it. And it's great, and I hope you do read, if you haven't read, I hope you do read my little note in this newsletter about elected officials at every level, because we really do need you to make it work. All the marketing in the world, all the leadership in the world, would not work if we don't have good leadership in the public sector, and we are truly, truly blessed to have that here. In that next results, I'd like to congratulate everyone in Kingsport and in all of Sullivan County for the oil manufacturing ribbon cutting that was this past quarter. We've hosted several developers, Aerospace Park as part of that RFP process we've talked about to try to get some private investment in some buildings to go vertical in that development, and meetings looked very well, and we've been in some valid conversations. Michael Parker also joined Tri-Cities Airport in exhibiting at MRO Americas, the largest aerospace MRO trade show in the world, has been in Atlanta this year. We, along with our partners, the airport being the lead partner, hosted the Foreign Trades on Lunch and Learn. We've since been working with two companies who are potential applicants. One, as a matter of fact, their consultant called me today and said the application had been sent in to seek foreign trade zone status, and we're eagerly waiting to hear that. We hosted an Apex Lunch and Learn with our partners at University of Tennessee, CIS. Apex is a program to help companies get government contracts, local government, state government, and federal government contracts, and it was well attended by our existing industries at King University. We also sponsored, along with City Bristol, their E9 development team at BTS, a Hiring Expo. I forget the numbers on that, but I think there were about 5,000. Don't quote me on that number, but I believe the companies there represented 5,000 open jobs in Sullivan County, and they said the applicants were great. Upcoming things, we're hosting Ottawa's Industry Executive and a Site Consultant, the upcoming baseball game, the Bruce Motors Speedway, and we're still working on our red carpet in October. We're bringing site location consultants, our partners TBA, AEP, and Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. COVID kind of slowed that program down, and we've kind of made little efforts with that of just bringing in the TMDC people and TBA people, but now we got it back up and running, bringing in site consultants, so it's good to get the band back together. And also, I'd say that with the baseball game and with the upcoming red carpet tour, Miss Phelps, who you're going to hear from, we have reached out to her department with us on a lot of things, and helping us showcase the living experience and all the intangibles that we value here that make this such a great place to not only bring your business but to live. And she has been a great partner in that regard. I know you have a full agenda. Commissioner Walker told me about the very special need for me to be briefed tonight, so I appreciate that. But so, that's all I have to talk about, but obviously I'll answer any questions that you might have, or feel any compliments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The floor is open. Anyone seek recognition? Anyone at all? Mr. Walker, we thank you for being here.
Thanks very much. Thanks for your continued support. I don't know how to get ahold of you if you have anything that I talk to me about privately, but again, it's always a pleasure to be here with you. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Next order, Alicia Phelps, Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association Quarterly Report. Invite you to come forward. Good to see you again.
Yes, it's great to see you all. I have some slides, so do I, is this the clicker that I use?
Did you?
Okay, great. And thank you, Clay, for your comments. We love working with Networks. As noted, I'm Alicia, I'm with Northeast Tennessee Tourism, and we're excited to present our first quarterly report based on the partnership with Sullivan County. I've got about five minutes worth of a presentation. I want to be respectful of your all's time, and this is based on what was voted on in November. We received fiscal year '24 and quarter three, '24 allocations on January 17th, and November through December plus quarter one on July the 10th. We'll be reviewing our marketing efforts and achievements, highlighting key performance indicators, and upcoming initiatives. Pointing it at a certain area. Okay, I'll just give you a wink and a nod. All right. Okay, starting in April, our tourism branding efforts focused on strengthening Sullivan County's unique identity as a premier destination. This involves consistent messaging and visual representation, as you see across all our platforms, to ensure a cohesive message. Next slide. Our main landing page saw significant engagement last month. It's only been up for about a month. We reported a total of 4,000 site visits, averaging 132 visits per day. That shows consistent interest in what you have to offer and the image that we're creating around the destination. We have actively designed, printed, and distributed rat cards at more than 590 locations, including Tennessee Welcome Centers and key routes in surrounding states. Additionally, we've designed and printed an open music jam rat card, also available digitally to broaden that downtown Blount Bowl events reach. The Sullivan County Tearoff Map, which is not visualized on your screen, is another valuable tool. We expect to see that in just a couple weeks in hand. It provides a user-friendly guide to key attractions and points of interest, encouraging exploration throughout the county. We expect this to be in hand in just a few weeks, and it will be available at any site that requests it, along with area visitor centers. This current slide, we're actively developing and promoting trip ideas that highlight the unique charm and attractions of rural Sullivan County. You can see a few of the samples there. This initiative aims to encourage visitors to explore beyond the main hubs and discover the hidden gems that your area offers. Our dedicated travel trails, the Bootleggers and Burnouts, and the Tennessee Night Sky include several handpicked sites within the county. Between February and May of this year, these sites generated 1.4 million views and 63,000 clicks. Both have been picked up by national outlets, including Tennessee Tourism, so we're very excited about those. Our Tri-Cities Airport campaigns in Dallas and Washington DC resulted in over 2.4 million ad placements, 72,000 clicks and nearly 55,000 new users. The fly page on our website, northeasttennesse.org, was the most viewed page during that time. We continue to distribute a large number of visitor guides and magazines collectively with 185,000 combined copies. You'll see the Sullivan County highlight in those. They're placed in welcome centers in over 590 locations across multiple states. And just for reference, the average cost for printing and distributing publications can range up to $54,000. A six-month full page ad placement in Angler and Blue Ridge Outdoors Magazine ran until June of '25. This includes a digital e-blast of 4 million subscribers, providing extensive exposure of the South Fullston area. Colors of Bristol will air this month with a three-year pickup on PBS, Roku, Hulu, and DirecTV. This broadcast features three segments highlighting Sullivan County areas like Tennessee Hills Facility, Mountain Music, Appalachian cuisine, and we're really looking forward to seeing that come out with the stringing component. Our collaborations with media influencers have significantly expanded your reach as well. Partnerships with Traveling Mitch at 26,000 followers, Tri Fisher with 51,000, and Counting Countries with 1.1 million followers we hosted recently. We also have ongoing coverage from the Outdoor Writers Association of America, who has requested to come back with special interest pieces in August. For reference, I just wanted to show you the power of social media, because we've gone through a lot of those numbers tonight. Over the course of a year with one of our partners, 6.7 million impressions can result in an estimated $82,000 in earned media. 338,000 clicks can generate an estimated $517,000 in earned media. We're nearing the end. With our partners in Kingsport and Bristol, we've actively promoted events like the Boom Trace 250, American Motocross Association State Championships, and enhancement at Warriors' Path Disc Golf. These promotions aim to boost local engagement, highlight regional heritage, support extended stays, and increase national participation in tournaments in Sullivan County. And as Clay Walker noted, we're looking forward to participating with them in the 2025 Red Carpet Tour in October to offer more of a tourism and experiential side of Sullivan County. This coincides with our continued partnership with Networks and hosting prospective investors and developers in the county. Looking to January, May, we're tracking the percentage of taxes collected from Kingsport, Bristol, and short-term rentals, providing a clear picture of our economic impact and demand from our visitors to the county. For quarter three and quarter four, we hope to continue with what was originally proposed and approved, including photo-on-video shoots, MLB Speedway Classic, fall trip, digital ads, trip ideas, and collaborations with content creators. On behalf of our partners in Visit Kingsport and Explore Bristol, we appreciate your continued partnership and look forward to building on this foundation and success in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Phelps. Floor is open. Recognize Commissioner Means.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Alicia, for being here. Can you tell me which, I'm sure you have that number, you may have had it there. Each visitor brings in approximately how much money per visitor, per person? How much money does each visitor bring in per visit, per person? Was it?
Yeah, I actually didn't have that on here, but typically, we would see around $300 to $350 per day that is spent overall, and that includes lodging, food, entertainment, et cetera. We do see visitors stay in the area 3.4 average days. Is that really?
Yeah, that's per person.
That's per person? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for including Betty Starkery Cafe on your presentation. That's the, it's the go-to breakfast place in Kingsport, so not far. It's worth the money. What I wanted to ask, because I know you've done a lot of promotion for the baseball game coming up, can you share a little bit with the commission what you've done to promote the baseball game?
Absolutely. We're really excited this, with these dollars, it did provide an opportunity for outlets that we've not been in before, and so we have partnered with Major League Baseball and Bruce Motors Speedway, so you will see a lot of Sullivan County featured in ads that run from five to 30 seconds. They're actually already running with MLB.com and on their app, and then we're also really excited that we share that space, but when someone does approach the pitcher's mound, you will see a quick snippet of the area.
Anyone seek recognition? Thank you again for being here with us. Thank you. Next order, approval of meeting minutes, June 12th, 2025 work session, June 26th, 2025 regular session meeting. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Cowton, motion to approve by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Cowton. Any discussion on the meeting minutes as presented? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the approval of meetings. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two yes, two absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the approval of meeting minutes is adopted. Without objection, next order, approval of notaries. Madam Clerk, we have a list of notaries.
Cindy Dean Adams, Amanda Hicks-Booher, Carol Campbell, Amber Dalton-Chambers, Elizabeth Brooke Cornet, Savannah Davis, Angela Fay Eads, Kalina Marie Falber, Lisa Ferguson, Mitzi Fortner, Kyra Ambrell, Amber Anne Gay, Grace Gibson, Angelia Thompson Harris, Christopher Michael Hayam, Kimberly D. Hilton, Sandra Gordon, Gregory Wayne Jones, John Thomas Lattimer Jr., Mary Vanioda, Julie Annette McCart, Lauren R. Nichols, Melissa Odom, Kelly S. Pearson, Shetara Rochey Richards, Devon Lee Walker, Berboi Alexandria Weins, Betty Elwood.
You've heard the list of notaries. Is there any discussion on the list of notaries as presented? Anyone seek recognition for discussion? Entertaining motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Cole, seconded by Commissioner Cross. Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the approval of notaries Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two yes, two absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the approval of notaries is adopted. Without objection, next order, public comment. We have a public comment sheet, sir. Is there anyone that did not get an opportunity to sign up for public comment that would like to? Before we begin, I'd like to read the public comment rules. Each speaker is requested to state their name and address for the clerk's electronic record. Though this is not question-answer, clarifying questions may be permitted. No speaker can transfer or yield time to another speaker. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes uninterrupted, and is asked to direct all comments to the Chair of the Body and not the members. At the end of the three minutes, I will let you know and ask that you make your final Recognize Eric Spicer. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gardner, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Spicer, 433 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. I've got a long statement. I know I only have three minutes. Sadly, I didn't realize this meeting took place at 4:00 p.m. this afternoon, so sadly, I love you that are sitting here now, will not be able to hear the whole thing, but I will have others that will complete this statement. So if you don't mind, start the clock. I'll begin now. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I come before you not just as a concerned citizen of Bristol, Tennessee, and Sullivan County, but as a voice of thousands of working-class people across Sullivan County. We are facing a financial, who are facing a financial storm. The 2025 property tax assessment and the tax increase that looms with it represent more than just numbers on paper, but represent economic burden that could devastate our communities. If the increase goes forward, we will see a domino effect, yielding a tax payment for homeowners, higher insurance premiums tied to inflated values, increased cost of goods and services as business owners pass that hike down. This isn't just a tax hike, it's a financial rig current that will sweep away, any way the economic footing of thousands of your constituents. The truth is, most of you on the commission are far removed from the daily struggle of the average Sullivan County resident. You've been blessed with financial stability, many through hard work, others through inheritance and family business, but that is not the reality for most of the 200,000 people we serve. Let's look at the numbers. 16.5% of this county lives below the poverty level, and that's 33,000 people. Poverty level for a single person is $15,600. For a family of up to four, that's $36,000. The average household income is $56,000. Remember that number? Per capita income is $35,000. Now, consider this, the assessor told me that an 800-square-foot house is worth $240,000. Following the traditional rule of affordability, you buy if you purchase a house no more than three times your annual gross salary. That equates to about $80,000. How many in this room make that kind of money? How many teachers, first responders, firemen, paramedics, police officer? Sullivan County Sheriff's deputies sit in the back. How many of them make $80,000 in one year? Unless you're an attorney, a physician, an engineer, CEO, or even city manager of Bristol, Tennessee, will not be able to afford to live here. That's not speculation, that's math, folks. I witnessed this same destruction in North Carolina back in the late 1970s and 1980s, where people moved in from other states, built a house on every hill, and sadly, ran out to local farmers that live up there that were very poor. That's going to happen here, sadly. I speak for you two commissioners, because while this increase may not impact you today or me, it will impact your children, my children, your grandchildren, and your legacy if this county collapses under the weight of poor planning and mismanagement. I feel most of you in this room are familiar with Matthew 25:14 through 30. I personally know some of you do know what that is all about, and that's the, Matthew 25 relates to the parable of the three servants, or the three talents, where the master gave each one of the servants a bag of silver to invest, to invest wisely, and when they do not, he was ousted. I grew up in a low-income home. I'm familiar with what it means to live paycheck to paycheck.
That's your treatment, sir, if you could wrap it up.
Yes, sir. I'll finish out this statement, and I'll have somebody else finish the rest. I grew up in a low-income home. I'm familiar with what it means to live paycheck to paycheck. I watched my parents experience this way too often. There were nights where we only had beans and cornbread, and although I thought that was the worst, that we were worse off than anyone else in this county, I was sadly mistaken. Over time, I realized others had less than we did, and would be glad to have beans and cornbread. Struggle taught me humility, perseverance, and it taught me perspective. Commissioners, it's time for you to regain your respect. I'll finish with that and continue with someone else speaking my voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. James Kaiser. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
James Kaiser, two-two oh-four, King College Road, Bristol, Tennessee. As Paul Harvey was saying, here's the rest of the story. We're not here to watch public officials spend money like children with a quarter burning proverbial hole in their pocket. We're here to hold you accountable to wise moral and fiscally responsible decisions. What's happening now is wrecking a jail project far beyond the contracted cost, building a new high school amid declining enrollment, investing in parks and other projects without disposable funds. Meanwhile, the city of Bristol is three hundred and thirty-eight million in the hole. Their leaders brought a building appraised at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one point four million, a building that can't even be insured because of its floor plan. The building evolved part two. It's smaller for an official place, law field and a million-dollar cave park while residents struggle to afford housing by the map, the bankrupt, financially and morally. And now it appears the commission seems to be racing them to the bottom. Let me ask you, are you planning to cover this mismanagement with our assessment and taxes? I submitted the same concern to the city council, city manager, to the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, as well as to W C Y D at the J H L, looking front of Bristol Mayor Mark Puddin, President Chairman Minster with Matthew twenty-five, fourteen, thirty. And he was convicted with a yes vote, had a hard time, hard time backing that up. I hope I with these words will able to convict you in the same manner. However, I would like you to not vote yes, but vote no in recalculating assessment that will not stress our lowest common denominator. Let me close with a warning. If this increase passes, our latency rate will rise potentially to thirty percent or more in a country of two hundred, in a county of two hundred thousand people. That's up twenty thousand homeowners who have to pursue for back taxes by seven years from now. What legal team will manage that caseload? Who will fund the assistance programs to keep these people affordable? We all know who, the taxpayers, the masters, the same ones you burdened today. Have data in front of me that shows the latency rate prior to the assessments this year in twenty-two is six hundred thousand, twenty-three at one point two million, at twenty-four, three point six million, the vacancies. I guarantee you that will go up to about the end, eight to ten million for the tax statements delivered based on the assessment of the applied tax accrues. We're living through a financial disaster. We do not have the industry here to support it, the salaries that allow people to live here. I ran for city council, talked among the office and those running was to keep children here and not become a retirement community. If this assessment goes through and the tax accrue is implemented, our children, which would like to remain in the area, will not be unless they are a profession that could pay them more than eighty thousand a year to afford the eight-hundred-square-foot home.
Mr. Kaiser, if you could make your final statement, sir.
Okay. I guess I'll go down to the bottom and says, make the right decision, reject the assessment of the tax increase and survey your master's contributions with wisdom restraint and passion in your position to mean. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Pam Hebert. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me. I would like to, my name is Pam Hebert. I live at two-one-two Exeter Lane in Blount. And for twenty-five years, I have served on the board of the Sullivan County Preservation Association. And also for fourteen years, I've served on the Civil War Battle of Blount, Civil War Park for Battle of Blount. And I'm here requesting help. There's a small group of us that have served these, both of these well, I think, considering there's a handful of us that do it. And I think that the county does own the buildings, and we realize that. And they are getting in very dire need of repair. We've got roofs that are leaking, we've got foundations that are in bad shape, and we can only do so much. The last time we had a major leak in the roof, our organization raised thirty thousand dollars to fix the roof because the county said they didn't have the money. And so, and during that time, every time it rained, I went up and mopped water up off the floor because we didn't want the building to be ruined. If you've not seen our Derry Inn and the dependency buildings, you've missed something because we had people come from all over the country to see what we have. This past, two weeks ago, we had people from Maryland, from New Jersey, and it amazes me that that they're stopping in for no more publicity than we get, you know, for our little downtown area. And the fact that we're, all of this is volunteerism, and we're about to run out. This is a third of my life I have given to doing this, and I've loved it and I'm glad. But I can't continue to do what I've done. I can't continue to scrub floors, dust, and mop, and vacuum, and do what it takes to keep these buildings ready for people to come and see. The county should be, the county owns these buildings, and the county should be having someone in place to do this for us. We we plan to stick around and help, but we can't continue to do it all. And I just hope that, well, just like with the park, the Civil War Park, it would just take, it'll take a couple hundred thousand probably to get the park where we need it to be, but we would be the only Civil War Park between here and Murphysboro, while the drawback could be to this area. And so there's things that, that, you know, that we need money for here in Sullivan County. And we, I think we need to be careful about the money that we give that goes support other counties. I would like to see the money that comes in for tourism to be spent for Sullivan County tourism. And if we don't, like I said, if we don't soon have someone to support the the buildings to make sure that that they're standing, you know, there's no reason for us to be here. And so I just hate that there's going to be a time when we're just going to have to back out and say, you know, if the county doesn't care enough to take care of these buildings, to bring in someone, an employee, at least one, and we could use a couple to help with this, then then we're going to back out and and they'll be looking with, and all, and not only that, but you'd be surprised at how much of the inventory that is in the buildings that we volunteers have dedicated to these buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Malone.
Jerry Malone, three seventy-two Smith Street, Blood City. I thought I'd give a break in between the tax stuff and talk about something else if that's okay. But I just want to come to thank Alderman and the city of Blood City, and I just want to thank ones that have aggravated to death, like Ms. Whitaker, Mr. Bailey, Sheriff Cassidy and stuff, trying to outbudgets and trying to figure out what we need to do in Blood City to make our town run too, and educate me and to honor the thing. And I know the art and stuff, the support or the encouragement from Mr. Jones and Crosswell and Glover and King and Manover and all, everybody, you know, talked to us about that. The park, almost twenty-four hours a day, somebody's fishing or picnicking or just hanging out, and I never believed that you could build anything and it hadn't been destroyed like the border box stuff, and it's been really good. So I just wanted to thank y'all for any support stuff that y'all have given us. On the other hand, a problem with me is to thank you for the Houston Heritage Museum. We came over and Joe and Dag and several came over and decided to invest in a museum in Blood City, and it's not a Blood City museum, it's a county-wide, it's a peace Tennessee museum, but everybody voted to accept it a hundred percent. So that was a vested encouragement. And just let you know, it's been, you know, a couple of years or so, the museum is open every Saturday. Getting more, we're supposed to be doing tours two, three times a week. People call, I know the other day, the State Farm or Farm Bureau Women came over, and then Crystal Historical Women is over, and several more, and I had some private ones. People came from Crossville, Tennessee, that wanted to see a exhibit there. And so that's been great. We've hired a video dog for, we're getting ready to do twenty small promotion things on different arts exhibits and, you know, throughout Sullivan County. What we've tried to do is tie in, we're not big enough to do a huge museum, but like we've got the Derry Inn, the pictures and artifacts and stuff in it. So if you want to know about the Derry Inn, come to Blount. If you want to know about the birthplace of country music, go to Bristol. You know, all the ones at Sycamore shows and stuff. So we've got enough to get their appetite wet with over the mountain trails and so forth, that when they come, then they feel good. But what I wanted to just pitch to you tonight is, of course, President, you heard him tonight when he made his speech, they're starting July the fourth of this year, will be two hundred and fifty-year of the United States. And we need, needs to be started now, and the county can be the hub to put all these museums and stuff together. And I hope that y'all will start soon, the next July the fourth thing, the next July the fourth is on Friday, and I could see a county-wide celebration that week. And one more thing, and the react, but that's the biggest thing, I heard everybody want to come back to Blount and maybe you could put it on the football field over to other offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Ed Bush. Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thank you for having me. I'm Ed Bush. I live at three-three-eight-nine Highway, one-twenty-six in Blount. I'm chairman of the Sullivan County Historic Preservation Association, and fortunate enough to work with Pam and the group. We've been managing the inn for about twenty years. Partnership agreement, our group purchased the inn and gave, donated it in the profit channels to the county about twenty years ago. We still, as Pam mentioned, I didn't know if she was going to be here, bet she was, concerned with the repairs of historic structures. And just to get back, we're really hoping about the tax revenue money being available to fix the buildings. And it's kind of confusing, and although I get the more confused idea, how the money's, what's coming in, how it's distributed, your debt is getting a fair amount, and like, you know, what their impact has been and so forth. This year's budget is still kind of up in the air for what it is. Ten years ago, as far as the buildings, with Amber's older staff, we did walk them out, took pictures of problems. These have been fixed, these have not. There are other issues with the buildings that have come up, groundhog damage, some of the walls are falling down in the seventeen-fifties, granny cabin, logs that need to be replaced. So Cindy's folks, Cindy Stewart has a wonderful group of people in in maintenance, but they have too many things to do. There's just too many things to do. So what's the repair process? What's the timeline? How can we put a work order in and know it's going to be taken care of? They do a great job of things that need to be done, but with limited staffing, she can't get things done. In the past, it had been discussed that these buildings are a liability for the county, not an asset. You've got Sheriff's Home, you have seven, nine, ten historic structures going back to seventeen fifty. And as Pam said, people throughout the country come through, they cannot get over how well things are staged, the lessons they learned, the stories we tell. It's not just antiques, it's a story, America's first frontier. The question in the past has been, should the county transfer these buildings to the state and let the state manage it like Rocky Mountain? That's one of the things that the state recognizes, these historic, Joyce is saying, knowing that, saying that historic structures, the history of the, brings in a lot of tourists. As Pam said, we're doing everything we can. Next weekend, we're hosting the Children of the War eighteen twelve for our luncheon. We've had the D A R and S A R here. We're trying to stay as busy as we can. But then the question, is it better to let these buildings be managed by the state and then the county's tourism funds could be bringing more people in? But we're concerned with the five to ten-year problems. Will these persist for another ten years? Do we wait until the buildings fall down like we were in the past? And we just appreciate everything that you do, but somebody needs to step up and get some of these funding worked out, tourism worked out, and let's treat these buildings the way they need to be, and let's promote Loveville, and let's promote the history of the area.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. And forgive me on the last name, I'm not looking, I'm not, I'm sure, I'm sure it's me. Kevin, is it Kevin Smith?
Yes.
Smith. Thank you very much.
I can't write.
Yeah, and I can't say, so we're, we're a heck of a team.
My name's Kevin Smith. I live on three oh-four Boyd Road in Blood City, Tennessee. I'm mostly here because of the taxes, the increase, my assessment, I'm sure everybody's has, my assessment increased by, it was two eighty-six, it went to six nineteen. So, you know, and I can't help but notice, you know, this is not a dig to anybody, but everybody seems to got their hand out here and asking for money and everything else. I don't have it. You know, I don't think a lot of the Sullivan County people, like Mr. Spicer, mentioned stuff like that too. I don't think that a lot of this area has it. And I'm just urging everybody that I think you should vote no. I mean, right now, I'm in the middle of arguing with the state, the comptroller's office. I've done, went through the assessor's office here, and then went to the meeting that they had with the county or whatever, and I'm in the process of going through the state right now. But an increase of over three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars on my home, I mean, I, you know, and I get it, I understand, a lot of people's come here from California, Indiana, and everything else. And that's what I was saying earlier when I was in here, they brought their money, you know, and that's probably what a lot of people say, they brought their money and, you know, and this is a way to get the revenue and stuff like that. But what else did they bring? Did they bring jobs? I ain't seen any of them put up any buildings or anything like that or hire anybody. I mean, unless I've missed something. I mean, if I have, just leave it with me now. But that's all I really had to say. I just wanted to, I want y'all to really think about it. I think we need to make cuts. I know it's a scary, dangerous word, you know, make some cuts. I mean, I'm sure there's something in there to cut. So that's really all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being with us. Chris Ramsey. Good evening.
Good evening, Chris Ramsey, one-one-seven Mattches Lane, Kingsport, Tennessee. University of Tennessee Extension Office for thirty years. I retired in October last year, and we had several people take really good opportunities and ended up having several openings in our office. And they called me February one when we come back to help fill those positions, and we have almost filled all of them. Great quality theater. And I have with me tonight, Melody Rose, filling the agriculture position, what we would call the A N R, or agricultural natural resources position. Melody is a West Carolina native. She was Maria College graduate, University of Tennessee graduate. She's worked with extension for twenty-three years, and I'm really excited about that part, because our other four or five people that we've hired have no experience with extension. So it's kind of good to have a person that's going to have some background and be able to direct that and make it go in the right direction. Melody worked also with the Field March of the Backcountry for about three years, traveled the world, some very tremendous there as well. Excited to have Melody. You'll see more of Melody in the future. She may possibly be the county director, that has not been determined yet, but I want to take tonight and just introduce Melody Rose to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you. Thank y'all for being here.
Good evening, sir. I'm sorry, my name is Mike the Four Block Meeting. My name's Rodney Paget, eleven-twenty-five, Gombe Shol Road, Blount, Tennessee. Really, I'm not here to speak for or against the tax increase. You guys have a hard job, everything's inflated, cost of gasoline, asphalt, equipment, construction, everything. I understand that, people can feel the same, same sort of impacts as well. Uh, I don't, I'm not able to afford to put new pavement on the road going to my house. I'm not able to, um, you know, pay for a police squad at my house in case I need on, on, on regular. So I mean, there is benefits to the things that we pay taxes for. The recent assessment alone, without any tax increase, costing me about three-hundred dollars more. I'm okay with that. I can deal with that. For some people in county, maybe it can't. My concern, I guess, kind of going back to a few years ago when we had the opposite problem where property was actually decreasing in value and we were concerned that people were going to be paying more, um, to have the same benefits, is now we've had this influx of, of, as gentleman before was saying, uh, outer, outside state individuals coming in with money and able to pay excessive amounts for property. I feel like I worry that it has artificially increased the value of our properties and when this big influx happens to start to die down, which I hear transit is going that way, those property values may drop back down and then we'll have to recalibrate the tax rate, increase it more to get the same amount of revenue that we're having with now. So my concern with it, again, not for or against, a five cent increase, if that's what you guys decide on today, would be equivalent to about eight-point-two cent increase to get last year. But, um, my concern is for the future, um, are we going to have a property value decrease in a couple of years and then kind of increase the tax rate towards that now? And when that drop happens, we're going to have to reach more into our pockets. When they did the assessments, when I was speaking to them, um, they said they couldn't use things like Zillow or Redfin or anything like that. And routinely, people I talked to said that their properties were forty, fifty thousand dollars over Zillow or Redfin sort of assessments. And, um, again, I think they just represents the inflated market. And I wonder if we would have been better off if we, when we made these assessments, if we had kind of erred on the side of caution on them rather than blowing them out, raise taxes a small amount, but then as the value go down, it becomes a bigger amount down the road. Uh, I know that there's going to be school projects needing to come up in the next year or two. I follow that sort of thing. Uh, I know that we're going to have staffing and jailups coming up soon, you know, more of that coming up soon, so I would imagine you're going to have to raise taxes again next year. But I guess, yeah, when this is all said and done, my request would just be, once we get past the budget season, just sit down earlier in the year and really have some sort of strategic planning so that we can do this in an incremental way and not have it have such big ebbs and flows as we've seen the past two or three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paget. Before I close, public comment, is there anyone that did not get the chance to sign up that would like to?
No sign up or?
Yes, sir. We can, we can write it down from, from here.
Michael Bullman, one-five-two, Braswell Bakery, Bristol, Tennessee. I spoke earlier about everything going on with our taxes and everything. And the only thing I really want to top to all of you since you're all here at this time, and like the man said, everybody come asking for money, all we're asking are all of you to do your job, put us first. Where money goes anywhere, look for the people that's here, not the ones that bring here. We have the people here, let's take care of us, then we can be around to help other people. Because if we kill ourselves, we can't help nobody. Fair enough? Thank y'all. I know it's a hard job. Child may care by happy, young man may not by happy. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, sir. Is there anyone else? Before I close, is there anyone else? Without objection, the comment is closed. Next order, whole business review of resolutions. Recognize Commissioner King on item number one. There we go.
Beginning with, I would like to, last time when we had our meeting, we talked about the, some things and there was, uh, some amendments that came out. Uh, before we get into the tax rate and all that, I would like to go ahead and maybe get those amendments taken care of and get that out of the way. And, uh, I'd like to go, the first one to amend, uh, depreciation, appropriation resolution two-oh-two-five, dash oh-six, dash twenty-one.
Are, are you recommending we take item two in place?
Two, first, and then three, and then we'll go back to one.
Sponsor moves that we take, that we roll item one to the heel of the calendar for the purpose of taking up item number two first. Is there any objection to taking up item number two first? Without objection, recognize Commissioner King on item number two.
All right. The, uh, to amend the, uh, appropriation resolution and with that, I make a motion to amend resolution two-oh-two-five, dash oh-six, dash twenty-one to remove appropriation for account five-eight-one, dash one-oh, to, uh, dash tourism to the amount of eight-hundred thousand dollars as found on page six of the resolution, resolution and, uh, page twenty-six of the detailed budget document.
That's a, that's a proper motion. Is there, second to the motion, it's taken by Commissioner Counton. The floor is open for discussion on item number two as amended. Commissioner King.
Any discussion?
One seek recognition. Need one seek recognition on item number two. Commissioner Locke.
Are you removing eight-hundred grand straight out of the budget or are you just removing it off page twenty-six?
Commissioner King.
And I'm going to let Mr. Bailey explain this. He was the one that put this in the budget and, uh, he is the one that's going to be moving it. So with that said, I'd like, uh, Mr. Bailey to explain what they did and why they did
At the last meeting and since then, there was a concern about how the eight-hundred thousand dollars for tourism should fit in and have to be expended because it wasn't broken down as anything. Part of the purpose is to clarify, there's eight-hundred thousand dollars taken out of appropriation, so the resolution that's been passed, passed allocating the tourism funds back to Neta and cities, that would take place in each quarter and we would leave revenues in the budget for, we wouldn't have to project the revenues again. But at the same time, as we know what the quarter revenues are, we would pass a resolution allocating those funds as this body chooses. And that's just pulling it out very simplified, so y'all don't think that we're putting money in there and spending it for something without stating what it is.
Anyone else seek recognition? Mr. King.
Thank you. Um, with that said, I'd like to move down to three, or, uh, we got to move on.
Yeah, we got to move on item number two. Oh, you're good.
Uh, with that said, I would like to bring this forward to both and, um, hopefully that, uh, as it, I think this is important to make sure that this money is put where it's supposed to be and how it can be allocated out. And with that, I think, uh, I'd like to see this, uh, budget online in place. Thank you.
Recognize Mr. Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, when you look at the budget on the, on very front of the budget, underneath the, uh, taxes that's, uh, that's collected, got down seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand there and that's what's projected for twenty-five, twenty-six. Why don't we button eight-hundred thousand in there?
Mr. Glover, I'd like to answer that. That would matter to my staff and I get communication together. We've done it two different days and we changed, decided the eight-hundred thousand dollars to be put in so we wouldn't have to reappropriate with the resolution every quarter. So we just take that out and let you all decide what you want to do each quarter. Eight-hundred, there's simply miscommunication between myself and the rest of the staff. But it's the same money, it's just a different way of projecting it at a different time. Looking done a little bit earlier in the year and right now, it looks like it could be a little bit more closer to eight-hundred thousand dollars.
Commissioner King.
Okay. Uh, again, uh, when, when, when we first started this, um, the way that Larry explained it to me and others, um, this, this eight-hundred thousand is just going to be set over in a special fund by itself. And then as we did the quarterly re, re-allocation, it's going to come out. So it's not really going to be in our budget, it's going to be in a special fund over here up the side, but the money's going to be there, can't be used for anything else. And with that, uh, anytime at, uh, Neta, we do the quarterly appropriations to and payment, and it'll be there and we won't have to worry about if the money's there or not. So that's, I think that's a part of the simple explanation to it. And with that, uh, I'd like to move forward and with that.
And I'm going to bring us around to where we are. We don't have to vote on the amendment that calls the sponsor.
And I agree with it.
The sponsor of the resolution brought forward the amendment. So we're going to be voting on item number two, resolution authorizing appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agency of Sullivan County, Tennessee for the year beginning July first, two-thousand-and-twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. We're going to be voting on item number two, requires thirteen votes for passage. Commissioner Crosswhite seeking recognition.
Thank you, Chairman. I think, uh, I don't know if anybody else is confused or not, but is this saying that Neta is still going to give the eight-hundred thousand?
They're getting more.
Air port?
Yes.
And so if we're up for it, we give the NAM all the money, but they're going to come back and tell us what's what they're getting or not?
Mr. Bailey. At the end of each quarter, when the revenues have come in, then this body can designate that it goes to Neta how much for that quarter. That's, it's not, this is not an appropriating fund, this is simply providing a process that you all can act as you wish to go forward and spend it for Neta or whatever, put something in tourism, budget to county's tourism, but it leaves that resolution in place, that's simply methodology that can be used to expend it or to pay it out to Neta, but it still has to be appropriated with this body and put in the budget.
Okay, Mr. Bailey, that makes a point, saying thanks.
Commissioner Flack.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Gardner. I think just to clean that up a little bit, there's seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars allocated hotel motel tax revenue. Unless this body changes, the funding body, fifty percent of that money would go to Neta at the end of each quarter, once the, once the revenues have been recognized as voted on resolution. So the eight-hundred was just a miscommunication, from what I understand from Mr. Bailey. So the seven-ten in there was forecasted for estimated hotel motel tax funds, Neta's not getting eight-hundred thousand dollars. They're getting half of whatever's recovered by county. Second thing, um, somewhat related to that, I'll stay on point here, but I think it's important for everybody to know, um, details about what's in this budget from a personnel standpoint. Um, and as a citizen and as an elected official, ninety-one days ago from today, I made a verbal request to get details on the personnel budget in this county that's inside this budget. Twenty days from that, ninety-one days, I have not received a response. Seventy-one days ago, I submitted a public records request to this county that's still not been responded to. Not a minor oversight, it's a direct violation of state law. And it's, it's, it's really astonishing, not only in the citizens of the county, but as a member of this body. And so I hope you all take that into account. If you ask for personnel inside of a budget that you're voting on, it may take you ninety days or more to get an answer on that in front of this county staff.
Commissioner Glover.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got another amendment to offer to the budget, but do we need to vote on the first amendment first? And then vote on my amendment, or do you want to do both of them together?
Well, the, well, we're voting to your amendment, that, that'll help me out a lot.
Okay. All right. To follow up what Commissioner Slack was, was referring to, and, and I want to get into a little detail on this as a, this is amendment related to the resolution twenty-five, dash oh-six, dash twenty-one. The resolution authorizing appropriations for various funds, departments, institutions, offices and agencies of Sullivan County, Tennessee for the year beginning July one, twenty-five, and ending June thirty, twenty-six. To set up future budgetary calculations, it is the purpose of this amendment to establish clarity and details of the newly appointed position of Economic and Community Development Director as it relates to comprehensive salary costs, insurance, and all benefits beginning with twenty-five, twenty-six budget approval. First of all, it is the intent of this amendment to require identification regarding location of said salary of Economic and Community Development Director, since there is no identified location of said salary in current budget calculations of twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I looked through the budget several times, could not find it and still not anywhere. Second of all, following in the future, the disposition of Economic Community Development Director shall be contingent upon job description and supervisory evaluation, job description reflected in performance, accompanied by a process to abolish said position and importantly, salary shall be reflected beginning with Sullivan County twenty-five, twenty-six budget and continuing with future budgets. Third, it is the intent of this amendment to require all fiscal matters of this new position of Economic and Community Development Director to be included in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget of the mayor until the designation of fiscal details of the new mayor appointment of Economic and Community Development Director can be clarified, confirmed, and legally bound by this Sullivan County Board of Commissioners. Next, it is the intent of this amendment to establish Sullivan County Board of Commissioner approval for all future mayor appointments to this newly established position of Economic and Community Development Director. Finally, it is the intent of this amendment to request a salary scale for this new appointment of Economic and Community Development Director to ensure future positioning. In closing, apparently, if there is no funding source, taxpayer funding source or otherwise, there is no funding for the newly established position of Economic and Community Development Therefore, termination of this position is presumptive until funding is clarified and funding source is approved by Sullivan County Board of Commissioners. This amendment is effective upon passage and is manifested to the will of the people on July seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, upon Sullivan County Board of Commissioners duly passage. That's the job that was created a couple of months ago that was moved out planning and zoning. I think that- I think that position is still being paid out of planning and zoning at this time. And like I said, Commissioner King, if I've missed something in this budget, where that's at? Can you tell me where it's at?
If I could, if I could respond, Commissioner King's already said the other, the other amendment, so that that doesn't contradict his amendment. If you could help us understand that, that's creating, is it creating a position or monitoring a position? Help me understand.
That position was already created.
Okay.
And there's no funding for it.
Recognize Commissioner King on the amendment. Do you accept or reject?
I accept.
You accept the amendment?
I do. I, I think that if you're going to create a job, you know, first, when it's been brought to the county commission first.
So you, you accept the, you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Are you ready to renew your motion for passage?
I am.
Unless anyone else seeks recognition, Commissioner Vanover.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Glover, I was with you there for a long time. That's a lot of information out there. I'm going to ask you to repeat it because it was something, but would this be terminating a position?
If it's not pulled out of the mayor's budget to fund it until the county commission approves the resolution, yes. The funding needs to come out of the mayor's budget if that place, if that person stays in place until the resolution is approved. If not...
So, so we're voting to terminate a position is what more or less this is...
No, it's in the amendment that the money comes out of the mayor's budget to pay this person until the resolution is brought before the county commission.
So it would not terminate the position?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones. I'm going to ask that we vote on these separately, these two amendments. That's, that's correct. The, the first one, the first one's already been agreed upon.
Right.
But he's also, the chair, the sponsors also agreed to the, the second amendment, the second amendment as well. Unless, unless Commissioner Glover, would you, would, would it be more conducive to bring, bring that in form of a separate resolution at our next scheduled, our next scheduled meeting to...
How can we pass a budget tonight if the money is not in there for the position?
Commissioner King, do you see any...
I agree. You know, if the money's not there, who's paying for it? And the position was created, but there was never anything done further than that. You know, who's, who's the, the positions, who's, who are they under? Who do they answer to? And then where are they being paid from?
So your amendment is identifying the funding source?
Yes, sir. It's in there.
Commissioner Aker.
Thank you, Chairman. And I think as always, you know, I want to bring it back to, back around to copier leases. So I guess my question is to, to Dan. Because I think we also have to understand our roles, you know, in this. We are, we are here voting on a budget, but Dan, does, does the, the mayor's have the statutory authority to make a position like that? Or do you understand what?
Well, I don't have it. I haven't, I didn't know this question was coming, but I've always been of the impression that elected officials are given a set amount of money, and they make personnel decisions with what money they get. Yes, sir?
I'm kind of like, coming around to Mr. Glover. Position was funded, was promoted, or...
Created.
Created, but no one discussed how we were going to fund it. You know, and I, I don't think that's a very important thing. You know? Again, so yeah, I, I already support your, your amendment.
The amendment has been accepted by the sponsor of the resolution. Recognize Commissioner Locke.
The zoning and planning office falls in the mayor's office. So when she vacated the position, she was put into a new position, be appointed that position. We stood right there and voted for it. And I assume the young man took her position, and that would be a new budget amendment coming in to us. Is that you're right, last mayor? Bailey.
I'm sure, I heard everybody say, in general, I think you said this body approved the position that had been filled for this particular person.
Yeah, it was appointed by the mayor, we voted on it.
I think that...
Practice, I'm going back to what we're calling. So, you know, go make one. Go recognize her.
I'm going to need to turn, turn yours off, Hunter. Go ahead. Commissioner Glover.
I would like to clarify what Commissioner Locke's talking about. The mayor was talking about the appointment that he had made. The only vote that we conducted that night was the vote for Mr. Mead to take her place in planning and zoning.
Correct.
So we did not vote.
We don't have to vote for that. If you appointed her, we voted in the end.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's correct.
So, uh...
I'm going to turn, Mr. Vanover, turn you off. I've got, it's along the whole board line. You listen to the rest of it.
Well...
I want to come back to you.
Clearly, there was a person in a position that is still working for the county. However, there's not an allocated amount of money specifically for that person, even though they're getting the pay that they have been getting, and the new person has been put in at a slightly different rate, but with little experience and so forth. So that's what we've got. We've really created a position for a person that is already hard to work with the county. The mayor decided the title and so forth, and to move this forward, this body wishes to move that, and the person making about seventy-five thousand, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred twelve dollars currently before he raises. If you move that much to the new position out of the planning and codes and set the other position up in another department, whatever, under the mayor, then you accomplish your budget problem. You solved it. Now, who's going to fill that? You're kind of accepting the fact of who's going to fill it. Now, fill it in the blank screen and get this name written, be called. There's a person there, the mayor has moved over and need to create and accept the money to be paid for that particular person. It would be seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars out of planning and codes over to whatever the new position is, and still be working under the mayor.
Were you still, Commissioner... Commissioner Slagel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this new position that the mayor created, what's the salary for that position?
He has not submitted a new salary. He's not submitted any, I suppose, position, but I understand. They're paying the same amount as what he paid in the old.
No, it's a new position, so there was no amount set. So we're voting on a budget for a salary that we don't own. For a position we didn't appoint. We appointed Mr. Mead, Mark, we appointed the other one. It's mayor's appointment, we have funded, we don't even know how much that position makes.
Commissioner Glover.
That's the reason why I'm recommending this process tonight. So if, if he wants to keep her under his appointment, he can pay her out of his mayoral budget until a resolution is brought back before the commission that explains to all of us what her job description is, what her salary is, and the evaluation process and the funding process. So that's exactly the reason I brought this forward. You cannot pass a budget with a new employee in if you don't know what they're getting paid, you don't know what their benefit package is, and you don't... That's what I'm saying, you can't fly by the seat of your pants when you're spending somebody else's money. Need clarification on all this before we move forward.
Commissioner Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like your clarification. I, I think we need to get clarified and get it settled right now, who's paying who, where. So I'd like to make an amendment to your amendment that you had accepted, to move seventy-five thousand dollars from the planning and zoning department to follow this new employee wherever the mayor chooses to put her.
We have, I'm going to start writing these amendments down.
I think that would be a way to get us through the night and just with that money moved with employee to wherever the mayor chooses to put her. And I think that would take care of things tonight, move the process along.
That was motion by Commissioner Glover, the second by Commissioner Crossly. You had a question for Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Bailey is the...
Commissioner King, we'll kick you off here, and then we'll, I'll come back to you.
All right.
Mr. Bailey is the planning and zoning department right now in a little bit of distress with both of those fundings coming out of there.
He answered no.
You're what?
He answered no.
So it's not, okay. I'm, I'm not going to accept it.
They've had turnover in the position, and there's vacancy there, plus they discussed that there is a new position. It created for another planning.
Commissioner Vanover.
I'd like to ask for a vote on that amendment to the amendment.
That's a proper motion, is our second, taken by Commissioner Locke. We're going to be voting on Commissioner Vanover's amendment to Commissioner... Well, he did not accept it, but he's made a motion that we vote on it, and that, and that's proper. Let's put it on the screen. If you could restate your amendment.
Yes.
Yes, to follow the employee. Commissioner Cross, on, on the, on the amendment?
Correct, yes. This is on the amendment, and this is, I guess this is for Mr. Bailey. I think this is what was asked, but I'm going to re-ask it just to make sure I understand. Moving this money out of planning and codes into the mayor's budget, will that cause any problems in planning and codes?
My understanding of what might be taking place, I can't say for sure, but it can work smoothly for those people in their direction. They'd be in the mayor's direction, whatever they did in planning and codes, is what I understand. He plans to supervise that person for places, so if she puts there one, she can make use of whatever she needs.
I just wanted to be sure we didn't leave, leave one budget unsealed there.
Right now, there's a vacancy in positions, and also you're supposed to create some other positions. So that for sure, that position.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner King on the amendment.
I, I've got one question, and that's if we take the seventy-five thousand out, where's the money going to come to replace that seventy-five thousand? It going to come out of the general fund? Because you're going to have to replace that budget.
Mr. Bailey said it wouldn't put the department in any distress, so apparently they've got the money in the department.
Well, that we can, so we can have seventy-five thousand dollars back in our budget if we're not going to spend? Tell what we're going to do?
Apparently, there's money in the budget, in the planning and zoning, to take care of that situation. There's no, there's no asking for any new money, they're just moving, asking to be, moving money from planning and zoning to follow this employee into the mayor's budget.
So then are we going to put it back in?
No.
Yeah, so it's, it's gone forever?
It's not gone, it's just been moved from one department to another. Still there, just in a different department. Not been spent, it's still there, just going from one place to another, one drawer to another.
I don't know, it's tough being here. I've never, I never heard or seen this done. I mean, you know, you create a job, and you know, there you go. You don't have to get approval from anybody, you don't have to get a, you know, a...
I think we're making the approval tonight, because what this motion would do.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I just want to take a chance on losing the employee.
You're not, you're not.
Where's, where's the money coming?
The money's coming out of the mayor's budget.
Commissioner Vanover's recognized.
Is there enough money in the mayor's budget to fund this, Mr. Vanover? Where would you like to see the money come from, Mr. Vanover? The mayor's budget or the planning and zoning?
There is no money in the mayor's budget presently. What would be considered, and what I think is considered, was to move money out from that, since you've already filled a position, and that is an assistant director's position and moved it up to director. This body approved that, and that's funded. So if you decide to have another assistant director, you might have to come up with money.
We're still on the amendment. I want to turn you off, Mr. Vanover. I want to recognize Commissioner Aker. Turn off Mr. Bailey. Frustrating.
I, I think in order to stay on the process here, to discuss the amendment of moving the money, it was said, if we move the money, we're approving the position. I think I'm still trying to figure out if we're going to ever approve that position that was created. I know we voted one person in to take over a position. I don't think anybody, I don't think we truly voted to have this new position. And I think that's the, that's, that's the key here. We're, we're arguing about money, and that's the point, is there was a position appointed that didn't exist before, and now we got to fund a position that was created.
I'm going to recognize Attorney Street.
Well, I think you're getting into some deep stuff here, and maybe, maybe I wasn't clear in what I said. In Sullivan County, we have a history of micro-managing the elected officials' positions. But the law seems to be otherwise. The law seems to be that you give the mayor so much money, he can hire five employees, he can pay them twenty thousand, or he can hire one employee and pay him a hundred thousand. You can't really get into this approving a position. You approve his budgetary line item, and he can justify that line item showing you what positions he's creating, what he's filling, why he needs this money. But you simply approve the money, then he has the right to spend that money however he wants to. So I don't think that you, under the law... Now, Sullivan County has a history of being involved in the elected officials' business, and I'm not saying that's bad, but I don't think the law necessarily supports that. I think what the law says is, you give each elected official so much money, he can spend it however he wants to. He has to justify it to you in order to get you to vote for it. But once you vote for it, then he can spend it however he wants. So to circle back, I don't think you have to approve positions in elected officials' offices. You simply... You simply approve a total amount of money for their personnel. If he wants to change and move from one budgetary category to another, he comes back to the Budget Committee to get that done. That's set forth in statute. And that would seem to me to be what Commissioner Vanover's motion is, which would completely take care of the problem and would eliminate any need for Commissioner, for Herschel's motion. And I hope I've made sense, so let me just stop right there.
I'm ready to vote on the amendment.
Commissioner Glover, turn you on.
Let me clarify something. This is Tennessee Code, Act 86-106, 2024, Section C. Except as otherwise provided by general law or special or private act, the county mayor shall appoint members of county boards and commissioners and county department heads. Such appointees shall be subject to confirmation by the county legislative body, and in so doing, the legislative body may express its views fully and freely and shall vote for or against the confirmation.
Commissioner Means.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it seems like there's seventy-five thousand dollars just kinda floating around, and that there is a, almost like another department that's gonna be created through this economic community developmental situation. And so I have high concerns of that. I mean, we should be, we should be bringing that to a vote and knowing exactly what we're doing. So I'm just, I'm not really sure if they bring, if they pull seventy-five thousand out of the Planning and Zoning, which they have extra of right now, does that add seventy-five thousand to our budget that we're getting ready to just supposed to be voting on?
I don't think it does.
Mr. Bailey, do you know? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Locke.
When there's amendment on the floor, talk and discuss on the amendment.
That's what...
So they're talking about the amendment right now, and we're gonna be voting on it momentarily. It's widespread out here, it's out of control. And when, when, when there's amendment, Zane's got amendment on the floor, we need to vote.
I'm asking people to comment on the amendment, I haven't heard anybody get off, get off the rails on it. We're gonna be voting. Commissioner Vanover, you ready?
I would like to, one thing I would like to say, I'd like to see a job description. I'd like to restate the amendment to the amendment and add to it that pending a job description.
Commissioner Cross is seeking recognition on the amendment.
That was gonna be my clarifying question, I went back and forth until you rang in, which is, I understood your first amendment, moving the money from one department to the other after asking, I understood that. My second question was gonna be, now that you said that, the rest of his amendment, which was quite long, will it still stand? We're moving the money, but then, the rest of his amendment's still in place?
I would imagine so.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify before I voted.
Would that, would that make you feel better, Commissioner Glover, to add the part about pending a job description?
Ready to vote? Where? It has to be directed to the amendment.
It is, it is. As regular procedure, when we transfer money from one to other, don't we bring that to the Budget Committee? Do these have dollars?
Well, that was a question I just asked Attorney Street, is the amendment budgetary or is it more procedurally? Because this, this could be brought forward in a separate resolution, and then we can vote on our, vote on this, on item number two as presented, and then we can vote on this in a separate, separate resolution, but you've already, I can remind you, Commissioner King, you've already accepted his resolution that Commissioner King, Mr. Commissioner Vanover wishes to amend. Mr. Bailey, you were seeking recognition again? Okay. When the board opens, we're voting on Commissioner Vanover's amendment.
I think one of the commissioners would like to have it restated, and I'd be glad to do that if that's the way of... To move seventy-five thousand dollars from the Planning and Zoning Department to the mayor's budget to cover this employee pending a job description.
Okay. You've heard the explanation when the board opens, cast your vote on the amendment. Voting on the amendment. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Round and court.
Nine, yes. Thirteen, no. Two, absent.
Having failed to receive the necessary majority of the votes cast, the amendment fails. We're back on the original amendment, which has been accepted by Commissioner King.
Aight. Without any further discussion, I think we need to go ahead and vote for it.
Are you seeking recognition, Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Locke.
So amendment two and one is really not needed, as we just eliminated a county position, because we couldn't, we couldn't fund it. We just did, because that amendment three was for seventy-five thousand to fund, so we actually eliminated it, we did.
No, it didn't help.
We'll vote.
Commissioner Jones seeks recognition. Thank Commissioner.
We didn't eliminate the money, we just eliminated the transfer of the money. According to Mr. Bailey, the money is still in the Planning and Zoning Codes budget, and that's where it's being paid out of already. So it's, it's still there. We didn't eliminate any money at all, and we didn't eliminate a position. I still wanna see this voted separately, I ask.
Only way we could do that is if Commissioner King rejected the amendment, and he's, agrees...
Throw.
Unless, unless you made a motion to, and you got a second. I'm gonna...
I'll make that motion to vote on these separately.
Commissioner Jones makes a motion to vote on the amendments separately, seconded by Commissioner Crosslight. Is there any discussion to that? Dividing, dividing the amendments. Commissioner Harrison, on...
It was a lengthy amendment. Can we get a copy of it, or can I read that?
Read it, give us a minute.
I truthfully didn't realize it was an amendment or a resolution, whenever you're reading it first, so I mean, I'd just like to read it.
For the, for the purpose of putting it on the board, what's, we're voting on Commissioner Jones's amendment to divide, a motion to divide at this point, a motion to separate the, separate the amendment. Commissioner Jones, you could clarify whether I just make the motion to...
I make the motion to divide the question. That's, that's the proper motion on that.
And we have a note on it, Jones is seconding the process.
It has a second, it's not debatable. It is amendable. Majority vote required.
We're gonna, we're voting as to whether or not to add Commissioner Glover's amendment to Commissioner King's resolution. Understood? I doubt I'll be able to repeat it verbatim. No, to, we're dividing the vote, we're going to, his, his motion is to vote on Commissioner Glover's resolution, amendment separately from the resolution. Basically voting whether or not we're gonna accept the resolution, the amendment, basically. Separating, dividing, the proper motion is to divide. Correct. We're, again, that's correct, we're not voting on the amendment, we're voting on whether or not to, we're voting to divide it from the original. Are we understood?
Got a question for Attorney Street. One of the things on this is the amendment to require, let's see, what's it say? See, intended this amendment to establish Sullivan County Board of County Commissioners' approval for all future mayoral appointments to this newly established position of Economic Development Director. From what Attorney Street was talking earlier, and then what I think Commissioner Glover read, the mayor has to get our approval to appoint a department head. Is this a department head last one?
We're actually getting ready to vote on Commissioner Jones's motion to split, to split, that's where we are now. Ready?
...
We'll be starting back in about three minutes, so everybody can make their way. Attorney Street, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is too important to have a vote that is conditional. The county's financial status depends on the passage of a budget. We can't pass a budget. Can there be a question mark on it? This resolution is very confusing. I feel like it's probably out of order because it really doesn't, it's not really clear what it does. In fact, several things in it are incorrect.
Are you referencing the amendment?
The amendment, yes. What did I say? Yes, the amendment. The budget has been through months and months and months of hearings. The question that, the question that's being asked in this amendment is an okay question. Commissioners have the right to have questions, but this question should have been asked in March, April, May, June. This before you today is a resolution to pass the budget. We're at the end of the story. It's not time to pick out one little question about one elected official's budget and hang it out on, "We're going to pass it if this happens." You can't do that. Bonding companies, if they ask me for an opinion on the budget, they'll ask, "Well, what about that vote? It said it was passed if the mayor does this and the mayor does that. Did the mayor do it?" I mean, you can't do stuff like that on a vote like this. This is the county's budget. It's multi-billion dollars. Commissioners have a right to ask questions, but I don't dispute that at all. But it's a little late in the game for it to do that today. Several things in the resolution are not true. It calls for this body in the amendment, it calls for this body to confirm the position, to confirm the appointment. You have no right to do that. It asks for the commission to approve future mayoral appointments to this position. You have no right to do that. It says there's no funding source for this position. If you pass the budget, there is a funding source for it. You know, if the mayor gets a million dollars in his budget for his office and a million dollars in his budget for zoning, he has a million dollars. He can't spend more than a million, but he has a million. I just, I guess my answer is...
I'm getting clarity from the county attorney.
My answer is I think this is out of order. It places a question mark on the budget passed by this body. If you want to defer, if the motion is to defer this vote till I get an answer to my question, I think that's fine. But I don't think you can amend the resolution that passes the budget with a question mark. And condition it on getting information after the fact. And so that's my opinion.
Recognized, Mr. Locke.
So in other words, the mayor oversight of the Department of Planning and Zoning, so job duties have been changed and positions and titles of those positions have been changed. So what we need to do moving forward is wait for a resolution to come back in front of the body of the County Commission for the new updated positions that have been changed for salaries. We vote the budget in, then we can wait and hear a resolution form of the new salary position. And I think that's where we are. Correct, Mr. Street?
Well, I don't think... No. I mean, you're very close, but that needs to be done before you vote on the budget. But it doesn't need to be done today tied to the budget. The questions you're asking are fine. Why do you need a million dollars, Mayor? You're entitled to ask that question, and he has to submit to you what he's going to do with it. But once you pass the budget, you know, he doesn't have to come forward then and present to you proper, uh, job descriptions and things like that. I mean, you're getting it backwards. If you vote on the budget, you vote on the budget. He gets the money that's in the budget, whatever it calls for. He gets that money. And if he alters his personnel... Now, the statutes do require that if you do certain things within the personnel, you have to come back to the Budget Committee.
That's what I just said. So I want to understand how it's backed. Either he goes to the Budget Committee for reassignment, appropriation of funds within that department, or a simple resolution, come back to this body of the County Commission, be voted on, approve that position of the salary, whatever that salary is, or he goes to the Budget Committee.
Well...
The bottom line is, we got a budget in front of us. We need to vote it in and agree and move forward on down the road. When this new position is created, we need to know what the salary is.
Well, it sounds like it's already created. That's what I'm saying.
It's not created because we've got the position open, he's reassigned. The Planning and Zoning's Department Head to a new position, and you said we have some money left over for a new inspector, correct, Mayor?
There's funding for it.
Okay, so what we're waiting on is for the mayor to come back to us to move forward on what he wants to do because it falls under his discretion. It's his office.
Well, what I'm saying though is all that should be in place today for you to vote on the budget. It is what it is, whatever it is. Then if he's going to change things, not every change in every office requires approval by the Budget Committee. But some do. And I, right off the top of my head, I can't remember what that statute says. And to be honest with you, it's very possible that that statute that I'm thinking of is not even applicable because we now operate by a private act. So I'd have to get back with you on what is required to come back to the Budget Committee. But what I'm saying is there's a budget in front of you tonight, and it contains what it contains. So once it's passed, there, the mayor doesn't have to then come forward and justify to you what you've already approved. That's what I mean by you're getting it backwards. Now, if he makes changes after the fact, then he might have to come back, but I'm not even sure of that. But you know, what you have in front of you tonight is the final product of a six-month process, and you're trying to ask questions that should have been asked in March, April, May, and June. If you want to defer the vote, I think that's okay. You can do that. But what you can't do is condition a vote on this budget with finding out information after the fact. That's not going to work.
Commissioner King, recognized sponsored resolution. What's your...
I just want to make one statement. January and February, when that position was created and moved, I asked that same question in the Budget Committee. Where's the money going coming from? And I never did get an answer. So that's where, and I agree with what you said, but I asked and it never was discussed. So it was in them, but... So why wasn't it done like you said back then and we wouldn't be in this?
Well, I mean, I don't have an answer for that. If my mic aren't... I don't have an answer for that. But if you, your recourse is cut the budget. If you don't, if you're not satisfied with what's in front of you, cut his budget, cut zoning budget. That's your recourse. You can always amend it later and give it back. But I mean, you know, I can't go in there and force people to do, nor can you. So your recourse is if you're not satisfied with the information you were given, then you vote against it. Not the whole budget. You don't have to hold budget up. There's a lot of elected officials that aren't tied up in this. They need their budgets approved.
I have Commissioner Aker.
Thank you, Dan. And you kind of said something in that that I was going to say. I'll make a motion. We table items one, two, and three until we get clarification.
I wouldn't use the term table. I would use the term defer.
I would defer items one, two, and three until we get clarification.
That is a proper motion. Is there a second to it? Oh, did you? I'm sorry. I didn't see. I didn't see you do it. I do apologize. That was, that was not intentional. You read my, it was, it wasn't together. Have a proper motion, proper setting by Commissioner Slavel to defer items one, two, and three.
You won't have to run your notes.
Next County, next County Commissioner meeting then.
You said it's under the amendment.
Do you have, yes, specific days you want to put on here? Yes, please.
I would, I would ask Commissioner Aker to pull his motion, and let's get this done. We've sat here for a couple hours now and went back and forth, and I hope we haven't embarrassed ourselves. And I am, I am. I have rescheduled and scheduled and missed opportunity. It was family, vacation. I should be in Gatlinburg with my grandkids right now. Now here, we're going to talk about moving it to the seventh because we're sitting here going back and forth over an issue. Let's settle it. Let's get this budget going. Department Heads are ready to get going with things. And I ask you to reconsider, pull your motion. Let's vote on these two amendments and let's get this budget going.
Commissioner Aker. Do you withdraw your motion?
I want to clarify something before I withdraw it. Understand, item two has an amendment attached to it. We're not voting against it. Right? Understand, item two has an amendment attached to it. We're not voting against it. Right?
And he's accepted.
Yep.
So, he, he's accepted the amendment. So, we are voting on.
So, with that being said, since I have the second, is it okay if I continue to talk?
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Irisen, second by Commissioner Carr. Floor is open for discussion on that amendment.
So, we've heard a lot from our King School residents, Bristol residents, and our Sullivan County residents. I mean, the whole room's full of people that do not want a tax increase, and I don't blame them. I don't blame them. Uh, we've looked at what we can do and how we can do it. There's a couple of things I believe that are in play right now. One of the things in play is an audit that's coming back. It looks like we'll be seeing some revenue coming from that. Another that's coming along, and we've talked in the budget committee, the sheriff's office came in and said that we're currently under a corrective action plans for the worst, I'm, I'm not sure the exact term, basically corrective action plan, saying that because our jail situation, well, once that happens, it increases the amount we get per state employee, or per state inmate for quite a bit of money. In our budget committee, one of the numbers was mentioned was 1.6 million, 1.6 or 1.8. So, I got a 1.6 because it's a lower number. So, between that and the money we're coming in, um, I don't think we should raise taxes. I think we have enough money to sit back and watch it. We have enough money in the fund balance to absorb it, but I think it'll return because it's coming from our sheriff's office. It's coming from. But we, we raised a few things recently. I mean, it's, we haven't seen any of the impact of those yet. But I mean, we have raised some things recently that should impact some of this. Uh, written some of them down, the fee from zoning that we just did. That was a big difference. The Tier Two jail and the audit. But one of those things, I think we could actually do zero percent, and that's my motion.
You've heard the explanation. Floor is open for discussion. Commissioner Locke.
This question for Larry. So, if we do a zero cent tax increase, can this county operate?
Can this county operate?
Yeah, without, you know, with state comptroller won't just keep a certain amount of money in the general fund and, and all that, we're going to be in trouble this time next year. Will the people get taxed, double taxed next year because we don't raise tax increases this year?
One thing that was mentioned, or that would be impacting the items of revenue increase, and don't do anything with the highway fund. The highway fund will be impacted if you don't put some money outright, put some money in. In other words, we're going back to 30 years ago.
So, the only way to... The money in the highway funds, they take extra money out on top of what his proposal is to move to the highway fund, correct?
Well, that'd be one way of doing it. I wouldn't recommend it because the highway fund needs more money. It can't continue to take the fund balance, and it is to the point that it's going to be changing its operations if it don't get more money. That's very clear to us. We've stated that the whole time. That's been clear all year that had to happen. Make...
The sheriff's office requires to keep in the general fund.
There's not just reasonable operating balance. There's no law stipulating how much you gotta out. Not like the school department. But you get into the fact, there's a big difference in the general fund and school department. School department gets two large checks, one school is open every month. Make a payroll with it. They get their sales tax and they get their state education funds. General fund doesn't get that. It has to operate off of many smaller revenue accounts, except for property tax, and to, to keep cash flow operating. We'll be back another year. I'm not going to say this year we got far money, but in another year, something's got to give. We can't continue to use fund balances. It's an easy way out. And I, I don't like raising taxes either. However, if we're depending upon an audit, how much, it's going to go our way. They're going to agree, and we're going to gain additional money. We're depending upon the board bills bringing in once it's been approved by state. That may happen in very near future, and it might not happen exactly. Anytime there's catches come up in it. But you're taking two things there that still have to happen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Irisen. One of the comments that was made is that this is taking money straight out of the general fund, or the fund balance and putting it in there in that number from the fund balance appropriated. It won't impact the highway department's money. It's not going to impact anybody else. It's the same budget. It's just where we're getting, the money's coming.
We're talking about two different funds, the general fund and highway fund. Highway has its own fund, its own fund balance. You're talking about the fund balance of the general fund here, where you said take the money out of the general fund in addition to what it takes to operate and move it to the highway fund. You give it more money?
I'm not changing the highway fund's numbers.
But if you don't put, put a zero tax increase, you are, you are taking this highway fund.
You can take the five cents off the general fund. You don't have to take it off the highway fund. On page number one, it shows where that money's coming from. It doesn't have to come from the highway fund. Leave the highway fund number one, take the money off the general.
But how are you going to put that money in the highway fund?
It's, it's already there. Leave the highway one, take it out of there.
You're saying raise taxes for highway fund?
We're taking out the general fund. It don't have a tax increase.
You're saying now he's cut the fund balance further from the general fund and moving to the highway fund?
I'm saying use the 95 million dollars that we happen to have instead of having, coming out of a tax increase, you take it out of my numbers. 3.3 million dollars extra out of the fund balance versus the other. That's my opinion. Recognize Commissioner Slagle on, on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if we take eight million out of the fund balance, what's left? What's the total fund balance today minus eight million? And I agree with Commissioner Irisen's opinion. What's the fund balance after we take eight million out of it?
You're telling, well, we're spending years.
What's the number?
It would be reduced at somewhere around a half.
So, there's 16 million in the general fund, fund balance?
Yes, there's somewhere at a half.
16 million, 16 million in the fund balance.
The piece of paper that Hoggler sent around showed 22 or 24 million.
All right, correction. So, it's not 16, it's 21 or 22. What's 5 million dollars amongst taxpayers?
Commissioner Meads.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Irisen, I really appreciate you doing this. Um, if we're able ever to not increase taxes, this would be the year that we could do that. It's an honor to get to do this with each and every one of you. We work so hard throughout the year. Um, we come to these meetings faithfully, and I'm very proud to be on this commission with each and every one of you. So, that's why I just, I really want to make my plea that we take this to a zero. Um, each year, the property taxes have been increased since we've been on this commission. Because I want to, I just want to talk about what we have done to help. Most recently, we did, we passed a mineral tax. Um, we increased the permits and the usage fees. That's recent. We cut nonprofits. We moved the property and sales tax around within the school departments. And thankfully, the sales tax has steadily increased throughout the years. We've implemented the hotel motel tax, which has gone very well and offers yet another reprieve to the budget. And as we heard earlier, each visitor brings in thousands of dollars each time that they come in. So, then you have to think, are we just, did we just create that just to fund nettle? Or did we do it to help out the taxpayers to offset the costs that they have to pay? And I did it with that intentions, and I think most of you did too. We hired a grant coordinator to help, help bring in extra funds from the state and federal levels. Prior to my term, there was a liquor by the drink tax that was implemented and gambling tax that was implemented. And I'm, I'm not sure. I'm sure I'm missing some. Again, this is only, only being said to say that we have tried and we have worked so hard over the years. We put in, um, extra work that we wouldn't need to, to do, we wouldn't need to do it if we had done that. So, with all that said, along with the increase in the property assessment situation happening right now, I ask that we allow all of the other hard work that we put in to do what we intended it to do all along, that we let it work and that we do, let it do its job. Um, I ask that we just keep this at a zero. And thank you, Commissioner Irisen, for doing this.
Commissioner Harvick.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, yes, I, I agree too, and I appreciate Commissioner Irisen bringing this up. You know, I think we have heard a lot of our citizens expressing their concern about the fact that they've had this reassessment, and it's painful, and you can, you can hear it. If we really listen to what they've said, then we need to do everything we can to bring this to a zero because this is not the year to do it. Timing is everything, and this is not the year to be doing it. And we talked about other revenue sources. One of those is sales tax. But I've been discouraged about even asking for a referendum on that because of, you know, concern about property taxes going up. We don't need to do that. We need to look at other, other sources. That's only a handful of counties that haven't maxed that out. We've got so many people coming right through the center of our county, and we're not maximizing the revenues from that. I say good, you know, I'd much rather do that than, than add property tax, uh, burden on our taxpayers right now. It's just not the right time.
Commissioner Irisen, we read your motion. Would not need to vote on it. Commissioner King, do you accept his amendment? Oh, excuse me. That's not an amendment on item two, correct? It is? Okay. So, that's item two.
Two?
Do you accept his amendment on item two?
No.
Commissioner Irisen. Commissioner Irisen calls for a vote on the amendment probably second by Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Aker.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, because item two are appropriations. Item one says the tax rate.
Right. Item two is where we have to put how much of money is going to be on the general fund.
And you said it's on page five. I just want to make sure we're, we're 100% make sure we're, we're moving that one.
On the one that says print it on this page in the press?
That was point of clarification, which I just want to make sure which document we are looking at.
Yeah, because the problem is, I'm, I'm just make sure we're following. The problem is, item two is on this that we're voting on appropriations. I, I agree with where you want to go. I think we got to do it in a proper manner. Yeah.
You wish to...
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we're all on the same page. You understand.
Come in, Mr. Bailey.
Yeah.
When you adjust the tax rate down in the general fund, your tax rate, you adjust that number on page five.
Yeah.
So, you're saying all I have to do is change item number one. If you reduce the tax rate, yes. We'll change that amount over there on page five.
So, you want to save your amendment to item number one? So, you'll need to withdraw, so you'll need to withdraw it. That brings us back to the infamous item number two. Are we ready to vote, Commissioner King?
Ready to vote.
Item number two is originally amended from your first resolution. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number two. Excuse me. Commissioner Jones?
Explain what we're voting on because we, you look through a part of it out of order.
That's, that's behind us. Item, this one right here.
Which changes the 800,000 for...
That's correct. The original amendment...
That's what we're actually voting to change that.
Yes. Yes. Now, we're back on the original resolution as amended. Requires 13 votes for passage. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number two. Requires 13 votes for passage. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Madam Cork.
22 yes, 2 absent.
Having received necessary majority of the votes cast, item number two is adopted. Recognize Commissioner King on item number three.
Uh, that was to amend the nonprofit resolution 2025, dice, oh, six, dice, twenty-two. And, uh, I make a motion to amend resolution 2025, oh, six, dice, twenty-two to remove the appropriations for netted in the amount of 800,000 dollars that found on page 15 on the resolution agenda and page 26 of the detailed budget document.
You've heard the explanation of the amendment to item number three. Item number three is resolution appropriating funds to various charitable, civic, and nonprofit organizations for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. The floor is open for discussion and discussion. Anyone seek recognition for discussion on item number three as amended. And Commissioner King is the sponsor of the resolution. He's also the sponsor of the amendment. So, there's not a vote necessary for that, just like the previous. He accepts his own amendment. The floor is open for discussion on item number three. Any discussion? Commissioner King? Sponsor moves adoption of item number three. Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number three. Requires 13 votes for passage. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Madam Cork.
22 yes, 2 absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number three is adopted. Without objection, we go back to the front of the counter as requested. Recognize Commissioner King on item number one, resolution fixing the tax levy in Sullivan County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1st, 2025. Recognize Commissioner King on resolution number one.
This is the, to amend the tax rate resolution, and I make a motion to amend resolution 2025, dice, oh, six, dice, twenty, setting the tax rate at 1.629, which is five cents over the certified tax rate. Changing the amount going to the county general fund to 68.377 cents, and the amount going to the highway fund to 9.071 cents.
You've, you've heard the explanation on item number one. The floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner, Mr. Bailey.
I was just going to say, you've got to make sure you adjusted the general fund tax rate to cover what you're using for highway fund. Is that it? If you keep that open, it's equal out there.
Yes, this is, yeah, no, no formal amendment has been made on it yet. No, no, no. He, he is, uh, he has, Mr. Irisen has sought recognition. I recognize him now. No, that was... Make a motion to amend the general fund number from point 6837, or seven, seven, point 68377, reduce that by the five cents, which ends up being point 63377.
I'll say it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Irisen setting... We have a motion by Commissioner Irison, sitting by Commissioner Carr. Do you seek recognition or recognize you on the amendment, on the amendment, on what we talked about it a little bit of length, uh, previously? Does anyone seek recognition on the amendment? You, you denied it in the pre, in the previous conversation. So do you accept or deny it now?
I've got a question. If we go with Commissioner Irison's amendment, where does the money come from for the highway fund? Are we going to head it and let it out?
Has nothing to do with that. Highway fund, we still got the same number. I took it out of the general fund.
Commissioner Raker.
All right. I have a question. I want to make sure I understand the number. So you're saying on the green rate, take it from point six five nine six seven to what?
Okay, so the amendment that Commissioner King gave us on this sheet.
Right.
Take it to six, sixty-three point three seven seven. So I'm taking it to sixty-three point three seven seven. So it's on the general fund. It would be point six three three seven seven. Is it being an effective tax rate of one point, or one dot six one two nine at the bottom?
Yeah, so you're, you're going with the green rate. I want to clarify, make sure we're, we're going below the green rate.
What green are you talking about? The green rate.
The certified tax rate is from the state.
You're going to six of three, three three cent, which is two cents less than certified tax rate.
Yeah, I'm going to say that.
No, no. This is the resolution, I told not to look at this piece of paper. This is the new budget with five cent tax rate. Because the highway fund went up on this one, this is not.
Commissioner King, I want to turn your mic off just a second, because I've got some.
No, this, the green rate is inaccurate. That's the piece of paper you told me not to look at. What's accurate is item number one.
Right. So they were on the same page.
Different numbers.
Would, do you need to, do you need to clarify that in your amendment, so?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm going to item number one.
Yeah, yeah, so, so state your amendment, make sure we got the right numbers.
No, because we changed that. The highway fund went up to nine cents instead of point six.
The, uh, Mr. King's amendment that took it from the original nine to five, I'm correct in that. So that's where we, that's where, that's where we are now. The original amendment was nine and this, and his amendment takes it to five.
Yes, I'm going beyond his original amendment.
Okay.
His original amendment took it to five, which is what's item number one.
Yeah.
He's got, is an amendment, sixty-eight point three seven seven is for general fund and nine point zero seven one is for highway fund.
Right.
Those both numbers are on here now.
Yeah.
On the number one.
Right.
So I'm taking general fund down and additional five cents, which is point six three three seven seven.
Right, but our certified tax rate is point six five nine six seven from the state. So on, when he lowered the five cents, the, the current rate for the general fund is point zero two four and on the highway is point zero two five.
Even, even the grid sheets you're showing is the point six, it's one point six one two nine.
Yeah, totally, but we still have to break out how it all goes everywhere. You see that? And the certified general fund tax rate is point six five nine six seven.
No, that's what I'm saying is like he amended that number in his, in his original amendment that he actually did, didn't have to vote for. The piece of paper he gave us took the general fund to sixty-eight one three seven seven, not on the green sheet, on the sheet that Delaik gave us.
Yeah.
So it's not sixty-five, it's sixty-eight. He changed that.
Right, and now you want to take your five cents off of sixty-eight?
Yes. Yes.
Right.
Your, your, your amendment is taking our tax rate to the certified state rate?
Going to the certified state rate.
Not rate. You would say that and not the numbers.
But don't I have to look at the numbers where they're coming from?
Yeah, but if you take five cents off of point six eight, you're at point six three.
Point six three, yes.
But the certified tax rate is point six five.
No. That was there a recommendation. Certified tax rate is at the bottom, one point six one two nine.
Larry, can we have some confirmation that we don't?
And we'll be under one six one if we do three cents less.
Right.
The certified tax rate is the certified rate.
Is the certified rate, but, but broken out, the general fund is point six five.
That was the recommendation.
So, so we, so if we get it on point six three, I want, I think I'm there, I just want to make sure when we vote, we're not changing the one point six one two nine.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Yep. Yeah. Okay. Part of it. The one six one two nine. You have paid one six one two nine.
Yes, okay. I, I think we're good. I just want to make sure when we throw all these numbers around.
All right, one six one two nine.
Yep. We're staying at one point six one two nine.
Yes, sir. That's fair. Yeah. That's fair.
Commissioner Irison, you renew your motion on the amendment?
Yes.
Sponsor renews his motion on the amendment without objection. When the board opens, please cast your vote on the amendment, not the resolution, on the amendment. You would mind to restate your amendment for the board?
The total tax rate, the total tax rate goes down to one point six one two nine, which is the certified rate. The way it's broken out in item number one, the top number will be point six three three seven seven, and all of the other numbers remain the same from his amendment.
He's got another reduction.
It goes down to the certified rate, one point six one two nine, which is this certified Going down to the certified rate. He changed that number. That, that number doesn't mean anything anymore. We change it to the version number. We change it. Sixty-eight point three seven.
Mr. Irison, if you could re, if you could restate it for the purposes of the board so we, so we know what we're voting on.
Okay. So for the purposes of the amendment, the general fund in item number one will be point six eight, I'm sorry, point six three three seven seven. Solid waste does not change, point zero three seven two eight. Highway does not change, point zero nine zero seven one. General fund, school fund is not changed, point five nine five one four. County capital projects does not change, point zero five one zero zero. And debt service is not changed, point zero two five zero zero. And grand total, total tax rate will be one point six one two nine. Let's give her, let's give her a moment to, uh, put that up and then we'll vote on it. Requires thirteen votes for passage.
If you're saying the general fund rate is going to be point six three three seven seven and you keeping everything else, solid waste, highway fund, school, general, city county fund, county capital, athletic fund, debt service fund, that comes to one fifty-nine, not one sixty-one.
You can't add for liquor and wine. Is this, it's not liquor.
What I'm saying is it's not one sixty-one.
You're looking at the wrong location.
The green line, the green box is the certified tax rate of one sixty-one. If you're changing the rate of one six three.
What, what line are you going off of?
I believe if I may, if I understand Commissioner Irison's amendment, what he is saying, if you look at the sheet, it's in the front of the budget document, it's got the green and yellow boxes. Um, what he's saying is, go, you know, we can, we're going to look at the green first because what he's wanting to do is stick with the certified rate, but change one number in the allocation, how it's allocated between the funds. So the overall rate per his amendment would be the certified rate of one point six one two nine. But the allocation for the general fund would change. That would be the only allocated number that would change. And it would be reduced from the point six five nine six seven to six three three seven seven. So the allocation would stay the same for every other fund. So the general fund would be taking the full hit of the reduction in the tax rate.
Yep. And actually from the green line, the highway department changed from the way it's current first amendment, so it actually went up to nine point zero seven one.
Right.
So when you stated your amendment, it's, it's proper. Is it visible?
Not yet.
Okay. We'll make it visible. And then we're going to be, again, we're voting on the amendment, not the resolution. Then we'll vote on the resolution following. But that's a correct number. Do we need to put all the breakdown in that or is that?
No, I think if we just reference the, I think, um, high, the general fund to highway fund.
Okay. All right, that's good enough. That's satisfactory.
Commissioner Irison? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the amendment. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Cork.
Twenty-one yes, one no, two absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the amendment is adopted. Without objection, recognize Commissioner King on the amendment, on the resolution as amended.
All right. Um, can I get those numbers? We want, if we want to change to, the latest numbers. This one. Yeah. I make a motion to amend the resolution two oh two five, dash oh six, dash two oh, setting the tax rate to one six one two nine, which is zero cents over the certified tax rate, changing the amount going to the general fund to zero and, uh, and the amount going to the highway fund to six three point three seven seven?
General fund is six three three seven seven.
Okay. You put it, okay, I see where you, what you've done now. General fund is six three one three seven seven. Right. All right. And then the highway fund stays the same, right? Yeah. Okay, I'm waiting.
Any objection?
Put it on.
Seeing none, anyone else seek recognition on item number one? Sponsor renews his motion for passage on item number one without objection. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number one. I need a hamburger. Bear.
But I'm telling you, there's some people coming in to ask for some things. They don't answer or be known.
Yep.
Well, yeah, that's what we have to.
Those are no bearers. We're supposed to be made as.
Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Madam Cork.
Twenty-two yes, two absent.
Having received a necessary majority of the votes cast, item number one is adopted. That brings us to the end of our regular calendar announcements. Before, before I recognize anybody, I'd like to, Hannah from the Health Department. She had asked to say hello to everybody before I recognized everybody. I told God to work in somehow.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everybody. Uh, I'm Hannah Taylor with the Health Department. I'll be brief since we're making so long tonight, but, uh, I'll share my contact information out with everybody and I really look forward to serving Sullivan County with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Mr. Bailey?
While we're still in session, um, on the amendment that I made, it was called out of order. I have a written and writing from the chair of this commission and from the county attorney why my amendment was out of order and struck from, uh, the, uh, the commission. I had a proper amendment that was accepted by the sponsor, or, or the sponsor of the resolution and it was seconded and it was debated and it was moved forward. So I wanted in writing from the chair of this commission and from the county attorney why my amendment was, uh, ordered out of order. And I expect it within the next couple of days. I want to know why. And, and county attorney straight, I've sit here over the years and I respect you, but you, you need to respect me too because we asked for advice and you, you're trying to tell us how to book and this commission belonged to the point four paper that's written.
I'll, if, if you'll sit, if you'll stick around, Commissioner, however, I'll, I'll, will, will my handwritten be sufficient?
Yeah.
Recognize Commissioner Jones.
You may have got an email from John, uh, Osborne. The Fall Conference is coming up, uh, and you need to contact John, respond to the email. Let him know if you want to go so you get those written. It's in Knoxville this year, so hope you enjoy it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else seek recognition?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. All those in paper?
Aye.
Stay in the adjournment.